The higher price.
When it's so.
She sent me this.
I don't know.
Well, I think that they have been better.
I have another one.
She said.
Yeah, I used to pay one of you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So it's.
Just one letter, that's all. No annotation. All right, seven o'clock, here we go. Good evening and welcome to the Monday, September ninth, two thousand thirteen, school committee meeting. This meeting is live and being recorded. We'll begin with Pledge of Allegiance. Still getting used to it.
We're going to testify in the United States of America, in the interior republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Long Meadow School Committee maintains educational policies that foster continuous improvement by challenging and supporting all its children in a safe and caring learning environment, enabling them to reach their highest potential and become productive citizens. Through effective communication and positive relationships, the Long Meadow School Committee will make informed decisions in the best interest of the students, the schools, and the Long Meadow community. Correspondence.
We just have one letter, correspondence, no subject.
Thank you. Any visitor comments? Seeing no visitors, we will move right along to school committee comments. School committee comments? Jim?
You and I had met with Dan Healy and Peter Lang.
Landon.
Landon. Tom, let me give these to you because it was talking about the smart school budgeting process and different strategies for the annual budgeting process that's being done. To use acronyms here, but the Government Finance Officers Association is one for the schools as well. I understand you're familiar with this stuff. But the bottom line out of that meeting was that Dan and Peter, I think, are at the Select Board today, tonight, as I'm talking about this right now, to put forward a proposed process for the town. And then there would be one corresponding for the schools. And when you look through the criteria of these documents, except for the organization chart definition within our budgeting process, we meet, and a three-year outlook plan, a three-year outlook plan. We meet the, all the requirements of this document, I think, Tom, so you can take a look at it. What Michael and I said we would do, and I haven't done it yet, to be quite honest.
Me either.
Read all of this, but I will. And then come back with a recommendation on how do we move forward with things such as a three-year outlook. And some of the challenges, of course, of the outlook were, how do you propose or forecast negotiations around labor negotiations and things like that? How do you do that without causing problems, you know, forward?
They didn't really know?
So.
But they were looking for us.
We got to take a look at that, but otherwise, I'd like you to take a look, Tom, and get your opinion on, do we meet everything? And if we do good, the other thing that came out of it was maybe on our webpage, we could make it a little bit more clear of where the financial statements for the years are. You know, they're under your department right now versus being easily accessible.
But they said that, I mean, Dan Healy, for instance, had said that he had never actually been to our website before, and he was just kind of blown away at how much we actually had on there and, you know, how complete our website was. And, you know, based on what we were looking at and based on, you know, what they're proposing to the Select Board, there's fourteen steps, we're at number twelve.
Yeah.
So, I mean, most of it is just a transparency exercise, and I don't think anybody has an issue with transparency. So, we'll have more information as we get more information on it, but I think overall, it was a good meeting and a good first step.
It was very positive, very positive.
So that's kind of where.
So, Tom, if you give me some feedback on whether you think we meet everything, then we're good to go.
And they think that you're a pro because you came from Springfield, so I think you should know all about that.
So, can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
How is the strategic plan and our goals different than the three-year outlook that we're looking for?
The strategic plan goals would tie, you know, with showing us where we'd like to be.
Yeah.
As far as operationally, let's say, for strategic goals, let's say, for instance, Chinese, you know, Chinese. And we want to have Chinese in our schools for seventeen years, I'm making that up by the way. So, we're going to have this Chinese out there. Then, but the financial outlook plan is really where does money come from and what are we going to spend on Chinese?
So it's just assigning dollar amounts to the goals?
And saying, hey, from a town perspective, here's our budget today, year one, year two, year three. Right. So that you can plan, the town could theoretically, anyway, do some forward planning around, here's what the school's going to need, and here's what we need in capital, otherwise, and things like that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and I just have two quick announcements. The Long Meadow High School dedication ceremony will be held on Saturday, September twenty-eighth, at ten a.m. in Long Meadow High School in the parking lot. It's going to be a fantastic event, we're really looking forward to seeing as many people there. Everybody should have gotten a postcard in the mail, letting them know that they should RSVP to Diane, and her information is on there as well as on the website. In addition, seniors, we're inviting the senior community to Long Meadow High School on Friday, September twenty-seventh, for a luncheon and a concert. The program begins at eleven forty-five in the auditorium, tours to follow. Finally, the Long Meadow Veterans and the Veterans Director, Anthony Lawrence, is hosting a Wounded Warrior Five K on Saturday, September ninth, two thousand thirteen, with walkers.
November ninth.
That's what I meant, November ninth, I apologize, thank you. November ninth. Walkers starting at ten thirty and runners starting at eleven from Greenwood Park. To register, you can do it online, and I believe there's a link on the Veterans website as well as the Senior Center website, and, or you can register directly with Anthony Lawrence, ALawrence@longmeadow.org. With that, we will move on to the rest of the agenda. And the first item of business, an old business, is an update on the Long Meadow High School project. With us tonight, Rob Alger, Tom Murphy from Jocelyn Lesser, Bobby Barquette and Peter Greenberg. So come on up to the table if you want, I know we're down a chair, I think there's one right over there, too. Unless you, Bobby wants the comfortable one.
Yeah, Bobby wants the comfortable one.
So, and, you know, obviously, for the last three years, we have been talking about a high school building project. And the people who have really pushed this project along and made it happen are sitting at this table right here. Especially Bobby and Peter, who have, you know, been so proactive from the community's standpoint in making sure it's happened. And here we are in our new school committee room. And although we do have members on the school building committee, I think it's important that we get an update from our owners' project managers on where we are, especially when we're finally moved into the building. What the remainder of the punch list looks like and how that process ends, and how the process of the transfer to the town begins, and whatever other great factors you have in there as well. And, you know, obviously, we all want to start by thanking you for the tremendous job you've done already. I think anybody that's been to this building knows, you know, what an exceptional place it is to come for students, for the community to come see. And so we do want to thank you for all your work so far, and I will hand it over to you.
Well, thank you to the committee for inviting us here, and thank you, Michael, for the production. I think one thing that we wanted to touch on, especially with, it seemed to be a concern of the committee or something we want to know about, was the punch list, so we want to go over that process. But from a global standpoint, as you mentioned, Michael, we have, we've started school, obviously, in the new building, and now we've moved into this area. As you know, it was kind of a two-phase construction process. We moved into the new addition in February, and now we moved into this area in the middle of August. So, the punch list is done when the building is completed. So we're further along in the punch list items in what we call B and C. If I refer to B and C, it's Buildings B and C, which is Phase One, the school area. Building A is the building we're in now. So, the punch list process is at different stages, B and C being for the complete than Building A. But our expectation is we'll be complete with everything about November one. So, we have more work, obviously, punch list work to do in here. As you, we distributed the punch list to the committee earlier, and I think if you go through those lists, you'll see a longer list in these areas because they were just recently completed than you see in B and C. But that's the, that's the expectation that the project is completed in November. We will continue on beyond that point with behind-the-scenes stuff. There won't be, there may be a few contractors here finishing up things, like. One thing that often happens is the site work is going to be completed November one, and we'll have punch list items on the site work. Unfortunately, with the planting schedule, sometimes things have to come back in the spring because by November one, we will be outside the planting season. And if there's replantings, there oftentimes trees need to be replanted or something needs to be replanted, it'll probably be springtime before we could do that work. But for the preponderance of the building, we would expect to finish by November one. So on the punch list process, what we do is that, the punch list is a document that goes back and forth between the contractor and the architect. And the punch list is basically contract work that is not completed or is not completed to the expectations of the architect. And the process first starts with the contractor giving to the architect a list of things. When we occupy the building, we always, we always schedule enough time to do the punch list, complete the work, have the architect check it, complete it again. But as any construction project goes, sometimes schedules get squeezed a bit, and that nice six-week duration for punch list tends to get squeezed a bit. So sometimes you have things that, there's a back and forth that requires a very speedy process between the architect and the contractor. So the punch list starts out with the contractor, goes to the architect, he adds to it, it goes to the contractor to finish that work. We give the contractor a certain amount of time to finish that work and when it's a good status because we don't have the architect out here every day checking things off the list. At that point, at the first list, the punch list can be quite lengthy, I think, in buildings. We broke Building C into first floor and second floor. The first punch list had over a thousand items on it on the first floor, as did the second floor of C have over a thousand items. So, what we try to do is make the punch list go back and forth between the architect and the contractor enough that that list gets whittled down to as few items as possible. When we get to a point that it's a manageable list in terms of, in terms of the number of items on it, we monetize the punch list then. And when I say monetize, we put a dollar value to each item on the punch list. Every contractor in their contract has requisitioning for the work that's completed. We hold five percent of that requisition out until the end of the project. So at that point, when the punch list is low enough that it's a manageable, a few list of items, we put a dollar value next to each one in terms of how much it would cost to bring someone else in to complete that work. And that's the monetized punch list. And then we can release, retain each dollars for each of the subcontractors up to that monetized punch list. So we always, we look at the punch list and we know how much value is still left in their contract to complete, and then we will release that money. So, we, again, the process, we gave the contractor up until we opened the school just this fall to finish the punch list items in Area C or Phase One. We first got the punch list back in February when we occupied it for the first time. But in working with the contractor over, we worked with Larry and Marie and the school as well in terms of which things were priorities, and coming up with a list from the contractor as when was a feasible time for him to finish the work and when it was good for the school. We didn't want to disrupt classes or disrupt, tear apart classrooms if we had to, to do some work. So some of the work we knew was going to be pushed off until summertime when we had the whole building to ourselves. So we worked with Larry, Bertie, in determining which of those items were critical and needed to be done immediately, and which items could be done over the summertime. So, so the architect did a lot of their punch lists just in the last, in the last week of August before we opened school, and then the week directly after school. He was in Areas B and C, all those areas, in addition to doing the first round of punch list for this. So, he's compiling all that data. The data goes to the contractor immediately, but it's in a format that isn't really, it's not like the list I sent you. He takes that back to the office and puts that data into that process. And we really expect the final monetized punch list out of the architect in the next week or so, where we'll get all of Phase One, B, C, down to a minute list of items, put dollar values next to that, and then work with the contractor in establishing when he's going to finish those things. Again, what you're seeing in the list there for Area A is the first round of punch list, so you're seeing more items there. And again, we'll work with the contractor in getting a schedule from him as to when he's going to finish these things, and then we'll go another round on Area A, do the same thing with the monetized punch list. So, so that's the process for the punch list. But as, as we go through that process, other items come up, and we kind of refer those as warranty items. The punch list is basically that point in time when you occupy the building. So for Phase One, we occupied the building in February. The punch list is basically a, it's a living document, but it's kind of a static document at that point. The architect has gone through and said, yes, this is acceptable, I haven't noticed anything. But things break after that. Door handles break, sometimes plumbing fixtures break and things like that. And they're all under warranty. They're, we have a minimum year warranty on both materials and workmanship on the project. So, things come up, since we occupied the building in February, that are on another list. And that's, it's not necessarily on the punch list, but it's a list that we keep track of. And I know Larry is good about emailing the construction manager and Rob every time things come up. And generally, they just fix them right away. But the warranty process is ongoing after we occupy the building up until ten months after the point at which we occupied the building. So, the ten-month period for C and B is coming up in probably November. And at that point, the architect will do another walkthrough. We'll take the current list we have of warranty items, and the architect will do another walkthrough and come up with that list of items, things that need to be repaired. So, we kind of track all those things. Those things are separate from the punch list, but they're all tracked in the same manner. And then the last category of things we have is sometimes teachers or staff say, well, this isn't working correctly or this isn't what I expected. And we'll check the contract documents, but sometimes it's just, it's not in the contract. It's just, it's bought that way, it's not what the architects drew. And those things are kind of what we call a wish list. So, we can go through those as well and determine, do we want to do some of these things or can we do some of these things? But some of them will just be on a wish list. And sometimes the staff and people don't quite understand that that isn't the way the contract was bought, and that we don't own that, but we track those as well. So that's a little bit about the process of the punch list. As I said, our expectation is to finish everything November one. We are pretty far along. We expect an updated punch list on the new building, B and C, relatively soon, and we'll monetize it and get from the contractor when we expect things to finish, you know, on a weekly basis perhaps, and find out which subcontractors own which components of that. But, so I don't know if, if, is there any other questions? We're here to answer them, if you have any questions about the process or anything else other than the punch list, we're happy to.
Sure.
We're happy to answer them.
I'll open it up. Jim?
Tom, we've just met for a little while, but what's your view of when we actually have a final punch list? Final being up to date and ready to talk about going forward punch list, the items for A, B, and C? Is it a week from now, like the fifteenth, or is it two weeks from now?
I would hope to get it probably about a week from the end of this week. We meet, we go over the punch list, every Thursday, we have construction meetings on site with the architect, the contractor, and ourselves, and usually one or both members of the co-chairs here. And we go over multiple things, including the punch list. So, we track those in the meetings, understand where we are with that process. What I would expect, I just got an updated punch list from the architect on two areas in B this morning. I would expect more from him this week, but I would think by our meeting next Thursday, we would have updated punch lists for all of Phase One. And then we would use that, again, as, establish that as our last punch list. I think that would be the third round of punch lists on Area One, Phase One, and monetize that one and work off that one with completion dates from the contractor.
So you think the nineteenth, that's the nineteenth, I guess, is our next meeting, right? So at that point, we'd have a punch list with.
For Phase.
With the phases and commitment dates, or just line items, do you think?
For that, for that meeting, we could get that list for Phase One. I'd want to check with the CM to see where he's at in A. Because Building A, he just got recently, we just, we just, the architect just went through and did his checks. Again, the architect was through the last week of August and the first week of September doing all checks on basically the entire building, so he's got a little time to process that. I'd want to check with the CM on A to figure out if we could get that same list for, shoot, to get that list on A for that, but I would, I'd have to check with him first to see. He's got a lean on his subs a little bit, and again, we kind of want, before we have him go through the effort of monetizing that and giving us dates, we want to let him push his subs a bit to get that list down to a smaller level. As I said, like, for instance, in C, we went from a thousand items in January to about one eighty in July, and we think we're probably around thirty now. So, we want to get, let him take that first pass at it and get the list lower.
All right.
I think we could do that for Phase One certainly.
Two, just one other question, is the MDF room and this other server room, which I keep pointing somewhere over here, right? Idea, yeah. Is that on the list right now?
The MDF room, the main MDF room, the system is working, but we're running into an issue. When the power goes out, it takes a while for the air conditioning system to get back up to working temperature. We're troubleshooting that with both the product manufacturers, the contractor, and the engineer, and trying to figure out if we can, if we can deal with that gap a little bit better, either with the equipment we have, which we aren't quite sure if we can modify the equipment we have. We think it might be in something that's just inherent in the system that it has, it needs that time period. Or if we can't modify the equipment, if we can come up with another system that bridges that downtime, as it were, between that. The IDF room next to us, there has been a piece of equipment that we've authorized them to go ahead with that, so that's on order. And I know, I'll check with the contractor at our next meeting when we expect a delivery on that. I know we authorized to go ahead, I think it was a couple of weeks ago, and usually products are three or four week lead time to get them, so that's probably, should be coming soon to install that.
So you think we can get an update on that during an SBC meeting on the nineteenth, or no?
Yeah.
Yeah. The criticality is that, as you're probably aware as I am, right? If they go down in a bad time, like tomorrow, if it's ninety degrees and that system fails, if we don't get it back up, you lose hardware.
Right.
So it's a, it's kind of a big deal.
Yeah. And there were some, there were some, there were some insulation problems with the equipment we had. There were early on where I think there was, that was wrong power, I think, to some of the equipment that caused some damage to some equipment. That equipment has been replaced by the contractor and that has been repaired. But as you know, Jim, we're looking at, we're looking at a redundant system for that room, and then we're also looking at this fifteen-minute lag and when the power goes down and how we deal with that.
Okay.
John?
Well, besides the equipment itself, are you checking the air quality in the various parts of the building? The reason I ask is, you know, there's so much ventilation intake and exhaust. You can't open windows here. Is there some way of making sure that, you know, I saw this in the newspaper, they were doing tests on a school in another district just recently. And I believe the state does a test, but do we do tests for the air quality?
Yeah, well, we do have.
And including humidity, proper humidity, as well as, you know?
Yeah, we have, part of the commissioning process and the mass chips process is what we call a building flushout. And that is when you put special filters on all the equipment, and you just, you blow air through all the ducts for a certain period of time. It's like for, depending on the size of the HVAC unit, can be a week, can be two weeks. And that's just to make sure all the dust and everything that might be in the ductwork is out of there. Now, they take a lot of precautions to make sure the dust doesn't get in there. Every duct end is wrapped in plastic and throughout the construction period, so the construction dust doesn't get in there. But that flushout, as it's called, we just run air through the system, so it's all the, everything, any off-gassing you might have from carpets or anything else is cleared out through the building. In terms of relative humidity, that's all monitored through the BMS system. BMS is a building management system, which is a computer program that you can get on and it'll let you know every air handling unit, what the temperature is, what the fan speed is and everything, and you can take an instantaneous look at things. Air quality is not monitored through that BMS system. The humidity is, temperature is, airflow is, those kind of things, but there are no air quality sensors that give you anything like that. There are, there are filters and pre-filters on all the equipment, and that BMS system, if it isn't moving the proper amount of air through there, will register that. And you can go up and look at the filter. I know we've had a lot, especially this fall, we've had a lot of issues with the pre-filters, we're catching a lot of pollen. So, we noticed that when the air wasn't moving through there properly, went up and looked at the unit and saw that the filter had a lot of pollen on it and had to be cleaned and changed filters. So, so there are telltale signs in the BMS system that can give you, you know, some indications of air quality, but we don't have any sensors per se.
So, has that flushout been done?
The flushout's done before you occupy, yeah.
Okay.
And the system does have sensors on it to tell you when the filters are starting to get dirty. It measures it by differential pressures on either side of it. But there's also CO2 sensors in the building which operate an open fresh air supply damper. So, if a room has a lot of children in it and there's a high CO2 level, it picks that up and it starts to provide more fresh air. So, there is, there is some air quality that is changed by the system in that manner.
Thank you.
I have a follow-up question with that. You said that the air filter needed to be changed. Who does that, when you guys leave?
The facilities people. Initially, the contractor has a certain number of filter changes. He's done multiple pre-filter changes as well as changes in the main system filters. There's two stages. But already, the facilities department in the area we call the classroom wing or Area C, they've made changes to filters there. They've also made changes to the filters over in Area B, which is the admin, the band, coral, media center, and the administration suite, as well as the gym. They've changed those filters. We've actually had the contractor come back and go through, about a week and a half ago, and change all the belts on all the units as well as part of one of these items that we included in their contract. So, it's a process. But we've yet to go through and fully commission all the equipment, that's going to get started pretty soon.
Okay. And I guess another, just wondering how we're doing financially with the money for the high school.
We're tracking that as we go along, obviously. And right now, we're under budget on the project expenditures. I think if you attend any building committee meetings, you'll see as we've gone through the process that there's certain portions of the project that are MSBA reimbursable and there's certain portions that are not. And unfortunately, a lot of the renovation costs are excluded from MSBA participation. And being a renovation, we've hit a few, we've hit a few unknown items in this area that as they come up, we compare those against our budget and against any value engineering items we might take out. So the MSBA reimbursement lags, I want to, they don't want to lag too behind, too far behind. But there is a process that we go through in submitting them. And one of the things, change orders, which are the unforeseen conditions I mentioned, are submitted to them on a quarterly basis. They review them on a quarterly basis. So we'll do three months of change orders, send the data documentation to the MSBA, and they'll get back to us in a month's time as to where they stand with reimbursement for that. So there's a bit of a lag there. We track all through the project where we expect them to rule on some of these change orders. But there is a bit of a lag there determining what we're actually, the final number that we're going to get from the state is. So we're still working on drilling down on what that is.
Okay.
And they're, they will hold back generally, the last five percent of their payment, they will hold until the process, the building is closed out, so.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Yeah. Tom, can you go back through that a second? Finances are split between the state and the town, right? On the town budget, we are projecting a shortfall right now, a little bit, right?
Right now, that's, again, based on my estimates, what we're tracking is a bit of a shortfall in terms of the MSBA reimbursement side. Again, because of some of the unforeseen conditions we've had in renovation.
I understand. So I don't know how you took that comment, whether we were understanding or not. But we're currently overspending by a little bit, a very little bit in comparison to the total budget of the program. But just a little bit.
Right, and that, again, that's a projection.
Right, I understand.
The MSBA has this lag factor. I'd make, we make a best estimate as to where we think they're going to rule on things sometimes. We're usually pretty good about understanding what they will reimburse on and what they won't reimburse on, so.
I guess my only question at this point, if nobody else has a question. So basically where, I mean, right now, we're at a point where the building is what, eighty, ninety-eight percent complete? Ninety-nine percent complete even, maybe even a little bit more?
It's punch list stuff.
So what is, what is the next year, year and a half look like until school building committee kind of says, alright, we're out of here? Done our job.
Well, again, what we, what we're looking at is completion. You probably won't see many contractors onsite after November first. Contractually, that's the date that we have for substantial completion for the project.
Sure.
We've occupied it in phases, but they've been temporary certificates of occupancy, not the full certificate of occupancy. Again, with the small caveat that you're probably going to see, my guess is you're going to see some landscaping contractors back here in the spring, reinstalling some plantings and that kind of stuff. But behind the scenes, closing out with the architect, closing out financials with the contractor, closing out the mass chips process, the commissioning process, the MSBA. The project is, will probably go on for another year or so. I mean, I think generally, the commissioning process takes a month or so. And then the commissioning agent also owns a comeback, as it were, for the final, I think, ten months after the commissioning. And the MSBA won't close out until they get the final certificate from the commissioning agent. So with the phased occupancy and that ten month period and the MSBA closeout, I think we're looking at probably into the late summer, fall minimum for fourteen, for the final closeout with all parcels.
Can I make a comment? Please.
I'd just like to thank Bobby and Peter. This has been an arduous process that's gone on for many, many years. Again, behind the scenes, people don't see how often they're in the buildings, how they show up late at night when something's going on. And we appreciate that. Moving into the new facility has been an absolute pleasure. Personally, I love my new office, thank you. But in terms of everyone else moving in and loving the facility, we do that. We see a lot of work as we're trying to finish up for the dedication ceremony. I am looking forward to working with Rob and Tom to finish up that punch list. I think that the building looks fabulous. And as we talk about some of these things, we're down to the wire now with two months before the contractor leaves. But I'm sure together, we can work this out and get things done.
You guys have anything else to add, Bobby, Peter? No?
No, we're excited that it's coming to a close.
I bet you are.
So bring on the next project, right?
Yeah, for other students to follow, since I've been involved with this thing since roughly two thousand and four, you know, I'll be happy when this next year is done. We turn over a building everybody thinks up and feel comfortable with, and faculty and staff, especially students, are being educated without a hitch. That's the key.
Well, and to, you know, to obviously echo what Marie said. You know, we are right, you know, right in the red zone. We're right about there. And, you know, yes, we nitpick over some of the things that we think are important. And obviously, they are important. But, I mean, you know, the work that you guys have done and the school building committee's done has been, you know, beyond exceptional. I mean, I don't think there's one person that's been in this building that hasn't made that comment. So, you know, thank you very much for coming in and thank you for explaining the process to us. And if we have any questions, we'll probably pull you back in, if you don't mind. I know you belong right back, but.
We're always, we're always willing and happy to come and explain the process.
Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Have a good night.
Thanks.
Moving the agenda around a little bit more, well, actually, we're on agenda. But I'm going to ask Paul Donnelly to come up. And Paul's here tonight to talk about the annual field trip report. And for those of you that don't know Paul, he is one of the assistant superintendents here at the high school. And, and that's what I meant, assistant principals.
I appreciate the promotion, thank you very much.
I was looking, I was looking right at them, I was looking right at them. So one of, at the high school and mainly handles student activities on the whole. I mean, that's your, that's a big responsibility of yours, correct?
That's a substantial part of my responsibility. So in your packets, everybody, and again, thank you for allowing me to come and present to the school committee. In your packets, you would receive the two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen field trip analysis of overnight field trips, broken into two parts. One is the analysis itself, and then the other is the detail on each of the individual field trips. And this represents the fourth year that I've done this at the request of the school committee. And so we're now finally starting to see some things repeat because we have certain field trips that don't occur every year but occur every other year. So we've been through the cycle twice, if you will, for the most part. So last year, we had twelve overnight field trips. And I broke them down into four categories. And the sports trips are generally trips taken by sports teams or also by our ultimate frisbee group, which is a club sport, but we're including them nonetheless. These typically are almost a hundred percent participation because kids view this as just part of the requirement to participate in these particular activities. Music trips, and we have an overseas music trip every other year. And then when we don't have an overseas music trip, we have an overnight trip that is usually somewhere in the US. We've been to Philadelphia, we've been to Washington DC, for example, over the last couple of years. And again, these trips also tend to run close to a hundred percent. Even though, for example, last year's overseas trip, the price was about thirty-two hundred dollars. This just shows the commitment that the kids and their families have to the music program. They know this is going to be made available to them and they plan accordingly. But they're just fantastic experiences for our students. The next category is the overseas trips that are non-music sponsored, typically sponsored by world language, English, and also we have an exchange with Japan that occurs usually every other year. And these are the trips where we see the percentages be substantially less in terms of participation. And I think there's, there was a wide variety of reasons for that. One, they don't see this as, and when I say they, the students. The students don't see this as being a requirement, if you will, in terms of participating in the particular activity, whether it's Latin, whether it's Spanish, whether it's taking English. Actually, that's a four-year requirement. They see this as something that is an option, something that will enhance the curriculum for them, but isn't a requirement. And we see a variety of reasons why students don't participate at a higher level. In many cases, and if you look at the report, this will bear this out, in many cases, it is conflicts. Kids who are involved in sports, for example, and it's a spring trip, those sports are going on during April vacation, and they have to choose. And typically, with seventy percent of our kids participating in athletics here at the high school, they choose the athletics over the, the music trip. Let's, I'm sorry, the English trip, let's say, to England. I've also starting to run into, it's kind of interesting over the last couple of years, I'm seeing more and more kids write down on their individual surveys that went with my parents last year to Paris, went with my, went to visit a cousin in England. I'm seeing more and more of that where our families are starting to travel abroad more than they did two or three years ago. So I think that speaks to, you know, what we're all seeing and experiencing with the economy. And then the last category is that famous miscellaneous other trips. And these are things that are like the key club trip, which is all the way to downtown Springfield for the annual New England convention. It's things like Business Professionals of America, that they go to their competition, if you will, which is out east in Boston, Model UN, same thing. So we have those kinds of trips that go on every year. They tend to be relatively small dollar amounts. They are typically limited as to the number of people who can participate. And that's limited not by us, but by the particular governing body. For example, Model UN typically only allows you to bring eight kids. So that's kind of a quick overview of field trips. What we're seeing is that numbers are going up a little bit in terms of the total number of kids participating in those trips that I consider optional, the England trip, the Spain trip, those types of trips. The other trips tend to remain pretty much at capacity. You know, all the sports teams go, like if you saw the report, we sent five teams to St. Johnsbury for Ultimate. We sent a hundred kids, which was amazing. So I would entertain questions from the committee at this point.
Yes, we used to go on journalism trips to, Hoyou Community College used to do a conference, AIC, and then of course Columbia University. I take it we're not doing that anymore?
John, I have never seen a request for a trip to any of those. So no.
Well, okay, well, for the record, they were useful in helping improve the quality of journalism. So I just mentioned it, if you want to pass it on to whoever's the advisor for that.
I will, I will pass it on.
Especially the two local ones, they're just bus fare.
Yep, I'll pass that on to our department chair.
Okay, thank you.
Jim.
Hi, Paul.
Hi, Jim.
Just from the perspective of these kind of other trips where you look at, you know, Ireland and Japan and those areas where we have fairly low, you know, participation, participation rates. And I know, because my daughter went to the England one at one time and stuff like that, is that I'm just wondering whether the teachers and yourself think of changing the objectives of the trip to get higher participation rates up? Because the categories for not going are, interestingly, like high in the other category, whatever happens to be, you know, other reasons for not going. And so are we meeting the objective, I guess, for the travel? You know, as far as just, I know it's more than just getting on a plane and going.
Sure.
You learn something. So are we actually meeting the objective? And if we are, how do we increase the participation rate? And if we're not, it's low, then why do we bother? You know, I mean, that kind of thing.
Okay, I guess I would say a couple of things to that. The number of students that have been participating over the last couple of years, as I indicated earlier, is going up. And when we look at the percentages, because that's the only true way that I can compare because, you know, we get surveys back from students, but surveys completed by students are, like surveys completed by adults. You don't get a hundred percent of your sampling group back. So we have to go with the percentages. You have to also recognize the fact that, for example, a trip to England, which was actually cosponsored between the English department and the social studies department because there were both components in there, you know, that's open to about seven hundred students. But it's open to seven hundred students every time we do it. Okay, we typically don't take freshmen, but we do take sophomores, juniors, and seniors. So whereas, you know, increasing the numbers of kids going, if we have a dozen kids going or fifteen kids going, I would agree that those numbers are kind of low. But now that we're hitting the middle twenties, middle to upper twenties on some of these trips, that's about as many as you want to take. So, you know, I can remember John Williams, particularly on the England trip this year, coming back to me a couple of times saying, what am I going to do if I have another kid or two go? I'm not prepared to bring in another chaperone. And we literally hit the limit. We lucked out that we didn't have another couple of kids sign up. We're going to have to be prepared to deal with that eventuality when it comes. But there is, you know, there is a point here where we have to look at safety and security of the students and how many students can you manage in a foreign country? Having done it and been in Japan with our kids, and Japan is one of the safest places on the planet. It is still an absolutely nerve-wracking experience for any, any adult. And if you're charged with eight or ten kids and you are taking the metro or the subway or whatever you want to call it, and you are going through a city of several million people and trying to get from point A to point B, you need to have manageable numbers. So we want to see some of these pick up. But when you're looking at middle to upper twenties in terms of student participation, that's a pretty good number. And Jim, just so you know, that other category there, I mentioned the number of kids who are saying, I'm going because, I'm not going because I'm taking another trip or whatever. That's part of that. I don't have another category for that. It just kind of came as a surprise when I saw all those kids saying, we're going with our parents. The other interesting thing is, as we've been doing these exchanges, and I think you probably, you know, know that we do this with Japan, but particularly with the kids that we've had come in from France over the last three years, on the exchange that we've been working with them, a lot of those kids have really formed strong bonds with their French counterparts. And they traveled back to France over the last couple of years to visit with their host brothers and sisters. So we have a really nice, a nice dynamic starting there.
Sounds good. So you think it's pretty successful?
I think it's pretty successful.
Pretty successful.
I do, I do.
I mean, just speaking from my own experience on some of these trips, I gotta tell you, if I went with more than twenty-five kids anywhere, terrible. Well, it would be, I mean, you miss out on so much when it's such a huge group. You know, you kind of get, you don't get that sort of experience. But, I mean, additionally, I have to imagine that you have a lot of people not going because their friends aren't going. And I'm sure that probably drives it too.
I'm sure that's part of it, although that doesn't really show up on the survey, to be fair.
Let's write that down.
But, but yeah, you know, kids will often say, well, if my friend isn't going, then I don't want to go. Or conversely, if somebody's going, then their friend will also go. Again, if their schedules and their finances allow. And with our students being involved in so many things, you know, with more than forty clubs here at the high school, with seventy percent of our kids participating in athletics, fifty percent of them participating in music, and fifty percent, almost fifty percent participating in art, they have lots of choices to make. And quite frankly, when I talk to my colleagues in other schools and I tell them about all the choices that our kids have and the participation rates that we see, including the number of overseas trips that we take, they're pretty much blown away by all the things that our kids have to choose from. And I think that's part of what happens here. There's so many choices and sometimes you can only choose one thing.
Definitely beneficial, though.
Oh, absolutely.
Any other questions for Paul? Seeing none, I'll let you go.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks for coming in.
Have a great evening.
You as well. Hopefully, we got you out of here quick enough. I figured you'd stay for SBC anyway, so.
Absolutely, Michael. Good night, everyone.
All right, going back on track, we'll move on to superintendent's report.
It's been busy two weeks since we last met. Staff development has finished up for this part of the year. It will continue throughout the year. But staff was delighted with the projects that they did, particularly the last week of June. We used some of the end of the year funds to enable teachers to work together in teams. And I think we'll see the benefits of that in the curriculum this year. It was also a pleasure to see each of the schools open. I made it around to each of the schools. I got to see Kim with her children and to see how well dressed they were. The highlight of the elementary school, I think, were the sneakers that light up when you step on them. They seemed to be very, very popular. They had new backpacks, shining new clothes in the elementary level. I think the middle school new sneakers were in, and the high school just did their own thing. So it was, it was a great opening and everyone reports that. Donna Hutton had an interesting story. She was telling us that one of the parents came up to her and he was so excited. He said, isn't this amazing? Look at this town, look at how wonderful. Look at this town, look at how wonderful this is. And she said, I had to step back because I was thinking about bus duty and I was thinking about getting them into the school. And she said, I had to take a moment to say, yeah, this is an amazing community. And look at this, parents walking their children to school, people bike riding to school. So that, that, I think, spoke well of what we're all seeing as school opens. Next week I'll meet, be meeting with the chiefs of Police and Fire and Stephen Crane to talk about school safety. That's an annual meeting that we have, just to make sure that we're all on the same page as we begin some of our review of safety procedures within the schools. The dedication ceremony, uh, is going extremely well. Special thanks to the committee. I do want to, uh, take time to thank Kim King, who's been doing an amazing job with, if you see the posters around town, the postcards that went out, the invitations, Kim has done all of that. And I think that they're really quality work that the community is giving us good feedback on. So thank you, and thank you to the committee too. We have Katie on the committee, Michael, myself, who am I forgetting? That's it.
Bobby, Peter, Larry.
All right. Uh, I need the school committee's feedback. You know the beautiful tree, the Ian Wax tree in the high school with the leaves that we're going to sell to get engraved? The committee met and felt that we should charge two hundred and fifty dollars a leaf. And then the Wax has suggested that we entertain the notion of, of paying two hundred, two hundred and fifty for a gold leaf, two hundred for a silver leaf, and a hundred and fifty for a bronze leaf. So we'd need to buy more leaves to put on the tray. But they felt it might be more affordable for people to do that way. So I'd love feedback to know if we should go with one price or if people think we should, uh, tier the prices.
I love the tiered price idea. I think it would ma- it would look nice here, you know? And I also think any suggestion like that from the Wax would be, is.
It's worth taking.
I think that tiering the prices would open it up to a lot more families and people in the town.
Okay.
I agree.
You know, we, we know that we can get different colors to different.
We can, we can, we can order them. So that's great. So the naming committee will be reunited so that we can change this, because we're ready to roll, otherwise. We have forms done, applications. We've delegated responsibility to, uh, Larry, Bertie, and Maureen for collecting money and, and sending out the, the leaves. So that's great, thank you. Uh, today Kelly and I began our rounds of meeting with staff. We went to Center School, and the goal of these meetings is to just say, how's it going? To talk a little bit about what we're thinking for the year, uh, and then to talk, talk about their needs. The needs they brought up, uh, well, not even needs, I asked for good and bad. They're thrilled to have the overhead projectors in each of the rooms. A couple of them needed whiteboards, but then we found out that some of the neighbors had whiteboards to share, so we just need to get them hung. The big conversation was around cursive writing. Do students need cursive writing? So that was interesting. We're going to put together a, a committee to look at that.
Oh, I thought you were gonna have an answer for us.
Did they?
My son loved doing it.
Okay. OT and, and some of the specialists would say that you need it. Research, uh, brain research shows that it does activate pieces of the brain by doing that. You hear some parents say, my students will never be able to write cursively, and I'm hearing now parents that their children love writing cursively. So as keyboarding comes in, how, the question is not, the question also is, how long should they spend on it? In the olden days, it was forty-five minutes a day, uh, and some teachers are doing ten or fifteen minutes, so.
Um, well, I remember, I, is it third grade that you learned cursive? It was, I struggled with it, and, uh, since then I've never used it, other than signing my name. And, uh, I think that it would be more productive to spend more time on, like you said, keyboarding and typing. I think that's a much more useful skill for the, the era that we're going into.
Joe, we're on the same page, but a lot of people aren't there yet.
So there's, there's some research out, because it was actually just on the news yesterday, um, that some schools are doing away with cursive writing entirely. Uh, some have it almost like an elective, you know, you get to do it if you like to do it. Kind of almost like art, like part of art, you know, because some, you know, calligraphy and things like that. Um, so I suggest, because I actually don't have a strong opinion, although I will say I haven't used cursive since, like, I'm totally illegible. So I've been doing keyboarding for a long, long, long time. But the, uh, there are ben- as sort of, there are benefits to it, um, I'm told. And so we ought to take a look at maybe making it as an, elective might be the wrong terminology, but, but an elective within a class to, to use within certain parts of the time, to go see how people do. But I will say, at least from the news, uh, it was kind of indicative that a lot of schools are doing away with cursive writing as a requirement.
And I'd like to read more on the topic, because when we talk about development of the brain, whether or not that is correlated, I, I'd like to know more about that. The, the time's going to come, probably fi- Katie, sorry. Uh, the time's going to come where it's going to be, um, speech to text. So we're debating these things that when you look out five to ten years, it may be a moot conversation. But Katie, I apologize, Katie's a teacher.
Katie, what do you, uh, what do you think?
I, you know, I, uh, it's just, it's just such a waste of time. It just, you know, when you think about like what you would expect your kids to turn in and what you can read as a teacher, and I can't imagine taking any of my day away and building in time to teach cursive writing when I'm, you know, so much of the day, especially with the core, is spent on actual content-based writing and, you know, the move towards expository. So I, I tell my, my kids have to type everything now that's turned in, that's published. So to then expect them to learn cursive too, I just.
And the debate came up particularly for second and third grade. I don't think they were arguing, arguing that you would continue it longer than that, but the second and third grade teachers wanted to know, is this an expectation? We need to know.
They should be, if they keyboard then, if they learn, start learning the keyboarding then, take that five minutes for keyboarding time, that is much more useful. And it imprints in their brain so much more that they can continue to use that skill for cursive.
Yeah. So, so I agree, actually, with you in that perspective. The, the interesting downstream event, though, as you go through a generation or two of this, is folks will not be able to actually read documents that are written in cursive, like our founding documents, right? You won't actually be able to read them. It'll be like code to them. Right now, I'm not too sure whether that's a good thing or a bad thing, because we are gonna redo them, the original documents, right? So, so the ability to write in cursive and the ability to read can be two different things. I'm not too sure whether we can do them differently. But I do think a skill set of being able to read something written in, in cursive is something people should be able to do. Because truly it'll become code, otherwise.
Absolutely.
And, you know, and nobody will know.
Kelly? I know you didn't want to butt in, but I, I'm interested in what you think.
I think the brain research end of it is compelling, because I think, you know, there's all sorts of apps, even that the content of the app is not necessarily geared toward acquiring new content, but activating parts of the brain, um, either before, during, or after learning. So I think the benefit of something like that, if it's cursive, if it's apps, if it's keyboarding, all of those are gonna trigger responses in the brain and, and trigger those neuro, neuro, um, connections. So I think it's a matter of finding out where in the day it works and it fits. Um, because I think there's, there's certainly a lot of time that, uh, particularly in elementary schools where kids are working independently. Um, and sometimes that work is so intense that it's not a bad idea to have sort of those brain breaks that help us reconnect those neural pathways. So using apps, learning cursive, there are some things like that that may seem rote and not directly connected to content, but that are really good brain activators. Uh, some, sometimes it's physical, get up and do some movement. There's a lot of research around that, uh, in, in the regular classroom. So I think cursive, um, and some other activities are, they sort of fall in that realm where they're, they're beneficial in terms of their, their brain activation powers, uh, even though they may not be directly connected to content acquisition. So the question is, is there a place for that? How can we weave it in so it's nicely embedded and it doesn't take away from the, the precious little time that we have for, for content area teaching?
That's interesting.
And Jim, just think about computer translation. You can put in the founding file the documents and one day they'll be able to translate the written.
Oh, they can, they will be able to. I'm just saying from the perspective of, again, it's, it's not necessarily making a good or bad statement. It's that not long down the road, people will actually not be able to read things wrote, things written in cursive. And it will be like somebody writing code. I mean, that's, that's my whole point, right? So, again, it's not a good or bad, it's just that's the way things are progressing, and we'll have to figure out how to deal with it.
But at least kids from Long Meadow will be able to read them.
Yeah, for a little while.
For a while.
Um, I also think that, uh, it's a great point, and we should probably not do away with learning cursive entirely, or else people won't really be able to sign their names in cursive, and that might be, uh, problematic. Um, but spend, spending a ton of time on it might be not the best thing for the going forward.
Diane will tell you, I just squiggle.
Uh, one of the teachers today brought her son, told the story she brought her son to the bank to open a bank account, and he could only print his name. So they gave him a sheet on how you convert your printed name into letters and told him to go home and practice before they'd let him open an account. So, that, remember, people used to sign an X?
That's what I was gonna say, what about the X?
Yeah. All right, so that was a good topic. Oh, yes, I'm not done. Um, the administrative team is going to begin walkthroughs. Kelly and I will walk with each grade level. For example, we're going to walk through with the, the elementary principal starting next week. The goal of this is to go to each, go to a classroom or several, observe the teaching, and then we can back out and we talk about what good instruction looks like. And the goal of this is to make sure that all evaluators are on the same page and our expectations are the same. The second piece of that would be to look at curriculum, see if we're, um, if we're seeing what we think we should be seeing in terms particularly of literacy and math, since we've invested so much in that. So we start with elementary. The, um, Kelly did a literacy survey in the beginning of the year, and this has been, this will be a great guide for staff development. She asked them areas that they're comfortable with literacy, where they need more support, and it will give us an idea of what type of partnerships that we need to build throughout the, um, year. I went to Bay Path today, and I met with, uh, the provost, academic dean, and the vice president, where we talked about how we can foster partnerships. We came up with three topics that we're looking at. The first is to begin to develop programs where our special education departments merge. They're developing programs in behavioral, behavioral, uh, programs, autistic speech and language. They also have a very strong program in neuropsych, so that we're, we're looking to see if we can actually have some of them coming over to work with, um, the student teachers coming over, because that would be a great blend. They've also offered to take some of their experts and to provide staff development for us, if we'd like it, for example, in behavioral issues, which right now is a challenge. So that they'll, they'll, we'll be able to take, um, time during our professional days to do that. They've, they're willing to work with our paras, as well as with our teachers. So that should have a great outcome. We talked about STEM and how we can align our partnerships. Um, we're working on a grant that Kelly's spearheading on RTT, where we're trying to get other communities involved, universities, Museum of Science, um, arts, STEAM. So we're looking at that. They, they have a partnership where their students are in, are, um, involved in doctoral program that partners with UMass, with the neuropsych doc- doctoral program up there. So that if this grant, um, goes through, we'll be able to form a partnership with UMass through this program, through Bay Path with the students who are going there and coming back, and coming back to us. The criteria for the grant, which could bring in sizable money, is that you have forty percent poverty level, which we have six percent, uh, in that ballpark. So we are, we've reached out to Holyoke and Chicopee. Springfield was not able to do it because they're focusing on literacy. We received a call today from Holyoke that Holyoke's very interested. So we're having a meeting tomorrow, and we're going to talk to some of the partners there. And then from there, we're going to, um, have a larger meeting where we bring over, um, the Holyoke people, some of the university people, and move further with that. It should be very, very interesting. Uh, Holyoke also said to let us know when they wanted help with their grant writers. I almost jumped out of my seat with that one. It's like, okay. So, because it's, it's a huge effort to do that. Kelly's initiated this and has graciously taken on the writing of the grant, so that's huge. But we'll have more information, very exciting. If, um, it, it depends, the money you get depends on the, um, amount of participants. Had we been able to get Springfield, it could have been a twenty-five million dollar grant over five years. But with Holyoke, it might be fifteen million in that ballpark.
Fifteen to twenty, maybe?
Fifteen to twenty, over five years, which would be substantial. So we're talking about having professors work with our staff, professors doing STEM clubs, putting teachers in with, um, in with these people that come so that we're training them. The Museum of Science has kits that would actually, we'd become the Western Center for Keeping the Kits here. We'd be able to get kits for all the schools that are in the partnership. So it's very, very exciting. So stay tuned on that one. And that's it, Michael.
Well, that's it?
That's it.
Okay. Um, any questions for Marie?
Great.
Um, my update. I've been busy, I feel like I'm always busy. Um, dedication committee's been meeting frequently. I think the plan is to meet every week now, uh, leading up towards the dedication. Uh, I'll echo Marie's comments that I think Kim has just done an incredible job with the posters, the invitations, basically anything that has text on it, she's done, and it's been great. So thank you to Kim for that. Uh, last Tuesday, I went and I had some lunch at the high school to try out our new food service vendor. And for anybody at home who did not know, we have a new food service vendor in Long Meadow. It's Whitson's, and we awarded the contract back in June, um, towards the expiration of Chartwell's contract. Uh, and I think that, you know, I speak for at least the three of us, that four of us at this table that were on, you know, the search committee. Uh, I think that we felt they were an excellent choice, uh, that they brought a lot to the table. And, uh, you know, so far, my first impression is that I'm very satisfied so far. Uh, I think the other great piece of it is that they retained a lot of staff that was here to begin with. And I know that we have an exceptional chef here at the high school. Uh, and I, I had the chance to talk to him the other day, and he was just so ecstatic about the work environment and, uh, the quality of what they're doing, and kind of happy that he got to show off a little bit these days. So that's great. I know that Kim also went to Blueberry and, you know, some, some of, like, the issues in the line aside, I know you said it was overall.
The food was good, and I was asking every kid that would answer me how they, how they liked the food. They were gobbling it up, they had full mouths. I didn't see a lot of trays going, with a lot of food going in the trash. It was good. The lunch people were actually telling the kids, reminding them to get, make sure you get one fruit, make sure you get one vegetable. They were, they were very good, the ladies in the back, so it was, it was good.
And you had some too?
I had some, whole wheat pizza, it was very good.
It was good, right?
It was good, it was horrible. It was good.
So, you know, obviously, I hate to turn this into a sales pitch, but for anybody who's got students in district, and, and Joseph, this is on you now too, um, send your kids to school to buy some lunch. At least try it, because I think that it's worth it. And, uh, you know, for anybody that watched before or is, you know, paying attention, last year was not a fun experience, working with, working through some of the contractual changes with Chartwell's. And, uh, you know, we would like to at least try to make this as, you know, profitable as it can be. But obviously, it's not always the goal of, of, uh, school lunch. But, you know, please at least try it, because it is different and it is new, and, uh, you know, that's part of, part of the sell, right? Um, we did talk about the policy for the tree, so that's, oh, that's right, that's why I wrote that down. Uh, we, it's been submitted to the select board at this point. I worked with Dave Martell to get our warrant article on the town meeting warrant for a fall town meeting for the bank, the revolving account, interest-bearing revolving account for the donations of the tree, for the, on the tree. And so, uh, Dave said it looked good, and, uh, you know, pending a rejection by the Attorney General, we should be all set. Um, I've spoken with Marie Angelides about what it, what we've put it on there for, what we've requested being put on there for. And so I'm expecting sometime in the next two or three weeks that I'll go to the select board and just kind of, you know, give them a very brief overview of why we've requested this account. And just for a reminder, we requested this account because we want to make sure that these donations that we're collecting from the sale of leaves on this tree go towards, uh, promoting volunteer projects and, and sponsoring volunteer projects, and that we have the opportunity to kind of give them in a grant basis. And the idea being that when they collect interest, we can, you know, basically give out the interest and keep this, this fund going in perpetuity and, and do some good with it. So that's kind of the idea with that. And finally, um, probably not gonna happen this month, but you and I need to sit down to do your goals and, uh, your self-evaluation. Obviously, September is turning out to be a lot busier than we thought, so.
I'll get to it soon.
Yeah, we'll set, I mean, I think mid-October for Marie's goals at this point, um, we'll get them in front of this committee. Self-evaluation, you can probably do a lot sooner.
Okay.
But I'll talk to you about that offline. But I'll talk to you about that offline. Other than that, I don't, I don't have a whole lot.
One last announcement, the Leaf Gala.
Oh yeah, that's right.
Is going to be held at the.
Festival Hall of Fame.
November twelfth?
Second.
Second, thank you. So I just wanna give it a pitch. Thank you for filling in the details. But make sure you get your tickets. They're seventy dollars if you buy them right now and then the price goes up to seventy-five. If you donate a hundred dollars, then you are listed in the program as being a contributor. So please do get your tickets and join us. It should be a great night on November second.
Yes. Marie's got more tickets than she knows what to do with, by the way.
I do.
I'm going for that. Well, I was, if we were still a swamp, I would have bid on the parking space. Lot of great prizes out there. So it's, it's definitely great. So hope to see everybody at Leaf Gala. Okay, so I'm gonna hand it over for his first student report this year. So Joe?
Alright, thank you. Hoping for the new year went very well, honestly. I'd just like to say that the front of the high school came out beautifully. I feel like I go to a college. With Mr. Dunkley over, I don't know if you guys know this, but Mr. Dunkley oversees all the student government for our high school. And incoming freshmen, the class twenty seventeen, will be holding their elections very soon. I am the vice president of my class and I'm currently working with the four other vice presidents to form a task force that we can use to discuss things that involve our entire school. And I was hoping that we might, once this gets set up, we might be able to get some kind of communication going on between the school committee and this new vice presidential task force that we'll be setting up.
That'd be great.
The, my president, Anthony Ferrera, he mentioned to us at our first meeting that some students are worried that there's, the new facility is not being kept as clean as it could by the students. So right now, we're working on forming some kind of committee or club, kinda like a, like a LHS pride type group to ensure that for the long run, the facility stays as beautiful as it is right now. So once that gets going, we're gonna be working on this, this week and next week. And hopefully, we can report to you at our next meeting how that's going. I spoke with Mr. Flanagan, the chairman of our business department, recently because, Emma Stoy, I know I spoke to you about this. That our, the only academic department at our high school that does not offer an AP course is the business department. And he suggested either AP economics or AP accounting as, to be added as a course. He leaned more towards AP accounting because that's being sponsored by the college board in the coming months. So right now, what I'm planning is to utilize the key club to take a poll of all students in our high school. Especially ones that take, are currently in the business department of if they be, if there is any interest in one of those two classes. And I'm also going to be hoping to get some information from incoming, from current eighth graders. So see if that might be able to be something that would be able to be added as a course. And I'll be able to bring those poll results to you at our next meeting. And other than that, everything, like I said, the, the front of the high school looks very, very nice and everything's going very well. Are there any questions I may be able to answer about day-to-day life in high school? Alright, thank you very much.
Jim, one more.
What's that? Alright, so I actually did try lunch on the first day. I, hamburgers taste the same. Last year was not the most enjoyable experience. I personally bring lunch most of the time. But it, it does seem, it does seem better, from what I've heard from kids. They like it more. So hopefully, the word, as the word gets out, there's a new system, we'll see more people bringing lunch. I, I mean, buying lunch. I see bringing lunch much more common at the high school. That's what I see.
Is that due to the lines or?
Due to the food.
Preference food, due to food.
I really haven't gotten to try out all the new food yet. I saw there was a very nice Mexican dish the other night, the other day. So I'll be trying that. But in the, in the last two years, it was just not the greatest experience. So I think that's why a lot of kids bring lunch. I think it would be really nice if we, cause now with the, with the new food providers, I think it'd be really nice if we could get more people buying lunch. It's much, much easier to hold three dollars in your pocket than a huge lunch all day. But, we'll see what happens.
Is there any way that we can assist you on helping keep the high school clean? I think that your idea of Lance's Pride is a fabulous idea, but if there's anything we can do to help you, we'd like to.
Yeah, so what we're planning on doing is meeting with, well, on the, I think on the twentieth, we have an S-FAC meeting, which is all the class offices and all the advisors. We're gonna be bringing that up, that meeting. And then hopefully, from there, we can bring it to Mr. Birdy. And once we, we were hoping to not only have it run by the class governments, but also by just students throughout the high school. That way that people can really feel some kind of ownership of the school or more than they already do. And just so we can make sure that, you know, like for the next ten, twenty years, that we're gonna be, forever that we're gonna be in this building. That it's going to be very, very, as, I mean, right now, it looks amazing. I hope we can keep it that way. So once we get, hopefully, just the, the student governments involved, I'll bring it to the school committee. And it'd be great if you guys could help us out, cause I think that'd be, I think it's gonna be a really nice thing. Some kind of student run, just, you know, keeping the school up nice and such.
It's nice to hear that students notice that and taking pride because the community has paid so much for this building. And so much time and effort has gone on. So you'd be commended.
Thank you.
Anything else? No?
Um, I believe that is all.
Alright, great. Thank you. Alright, moving right along, finance report.
Okay, I guess on the September fourth, we had a finance, finance subcommittee meeting. Myself, Tom, Liz, and Marie attended. The agenda covered the building, a building use request from Rays of Hope for the Long Meadow High School and Blueberry Hill High Elementary. Elementary School, parking lots due to the size of their, their event. And we agreed to that. And they also, we had a request from Long Meadow High School for the volleyball games to reschedule the event to Williams due to a high school dedication, cause it's actually on the same day. So we agreed with that as well. So that's, so as far as the building use requests, those were agreed to. And we went through the FY fourteen building use fees, which is in the packet here today. Essentially, we had talked about them in the last school committee meeting. And we were gonna double those fees for the buildings that were not specific to Long Meadow Public Schools or kindergarten type of utilization. So that's what you see in front of you. And then, so you can see what they are today. And then also, the custodial fees went up due to COLAs and that type of thing. So it's as, as we stated basically last time. Tom just finalized them and put their mouth for us. So we have a recommendation to agree and approve those here today as part of the school committee. So I'll read the motion and hopefully, we can do that. I move on the recommendation of the finance subcommittee that the school committee approve the building use rates as outlined in a document titled Building Use Fees 2013-2014.
Of a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yes, can I clarify?
Please.
Are the new ones, the ones on top here, standard hourly rates?
Yeah, for the, if you take a look at the Long Meadow High School, hundred, yes. It says yes.
Just the ones on the right, John?
On the right, for Long Meadow High School. Cause if you remember the conversation, we were really changing the rates for the Long Meadow High School. Being the new high school.
Okay, cause you have auditorium down below under reduced hourly rates.
Oh, that's for, so the top there for standard hourly rates for those people outside the Long Meadow school system. Right, so then if you go down, the reduced hourly rates are for the public schools. So if there are Long Meadow High School events or Long Meadow School events, it's different rates.
Gotcha. Thank you.
For the reduced hourly rate, that, that includes like park and rec, right?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Sure. Any further discussion? Seeing none? Well, for a vote, all those in favor? The motion carries seven oh.
Alright, so moving on, we also looked at the revolving account update. These are, this is where money comes in. It's from a revenue stream for things like circuit breaker, school choice, athletic fees, that type of things. We go through those accounts. Our current balance is eight hundred and thirty thousand, four hundred and seventeen dollars and seventy cents. The majority of that is in school choice, which is roughly, and this is not an exact number, five hundred and thirty, five hundred and forty thousand dollars. Somewhere in that area. And circuit breaker, which is a hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. Circuit breaker goes toward tuition expenses for outside district. Athletic fees, those type of things, and kindergarten fees, we actually have to target those fees and that, those accounts to those programs. So when you take a look at those programs, the money has to get fed back into either improving those programs or whatever we want to do. So there's not a lot of opportunity or, or we're not recommending we do anything there. School choice gives us some opportunities. And as a finance subcommittee meeting team, I'm sorry, going through it, we looked at, looking at utilizing some of that money for curriculum reviews and covering the cost of those curriculum reviews and books and so on going forward. Because Marie presented in the last school committee meeting, the curriculum review activity going forward. And we expect to have costs and expenses out of that review, at least hopefully, we will, or else nothing changes at the end of the day. So.
So Jim, just to clarify, in school choice, we only have five hundred and thirty-five thousand.
That's a rough number.
Not eight hundred and thirty thousand.
That's true, that's true. That's an approximate number. The eight hundred and thirty is an exact number.
And so for things like athletic revol, athletic gate receipts and parking fees, those go into their own accounts, right?
Those are like twenty, thirty thousand dollars a piece.
And they're pretty much designated for the.
They are specifically designated for those areas. So, so if you take the kindergarten account, which is full day, kindergarten, not half day or part day.
Right, cause people pay to go full day.
It's, it's, you have money there. And that's supposed to go toward that.
Right.
That service, right? Athletic fees are gonna go in, it's supposed to go toward the athletic clubs or, you know, athletic facilities, those type of things. So what we have to do then is look for opportunities to utilize that money to really improve those situations. Where, where do people need money to improve the services provided?
Right.
And, and use it accordingly. That's what that is. Circuit breaker, again, to be a little redundant in case it was missed, is really for outside tuition. So when we take, you know, we have students here that need to go outside for some reason.
Special education students.
And we have, right, and we have to pay for that. That's, you know, what that's used for.
And we get a reimbursement.
So, so that's where the reimbursement comes in and you get a little bit of.
And that's a reimbursement up to, what was it, sixty-five percent last year?
Yeah, something like that.
Above thirty-five thousand dollars, give or take?
Close.
Close, somewhere in there.
In there?
Somewhere in there.
Okay. I just wanna make sure the community, you know, is aware of these.
So out of that eight hundred and thirty thousand, four hundred and seventeen dollars and seventy cents, right? Roughly five hundred and thirty-five thousand of that is something that we could actually have some flexibility on, on what we wanna do with it. And again, the initial outlook is to say, let's look at the curriculum reviews, books and things like that that we may need to spend money on to go improve what we're doing with our stu, for our students today. And then we'll see if anything else develops.
Great.
We did have a conversation around building maintenance and making sure that we have the right money applied, priorities and so on. Building maintenance for this building specifically was the conversation. Excuse me, is handled through the Department of Public Works with the Select Board. So what we wanna do is make sure that there, as things progress, that this building is maintained properly. So we've gotta find some methodology to ensure that we have prior, once it's turned over to us fully, that we have the priority of items identified and things are getting closed and dealt with appropriately. It's not quite clear to me how we do that well today. So, so we need to figure that out as we move forward, especially when we finally have the building turned over, you know.
And I believe that we have a requirement through the MSBA to have a maintenance trust established on this building. I believe. So we do have to figure that out.
Is there, is, is there not, they turn over sort of like a user's manual when they turn the keys over? That this is, you know, like the prescribed maintenance and like, you know, they're talking about filters. Don't they give us that as part of that trust?
Yes, they, they've been training all of the custodians in various users, Kevin's groups and anyone who's going to be using the equipment or the mechanic, the, the technology needed to run it. And that we will get the booklets as well as the warranties on the equipment.
Good question. That was it.
Can I throw a question out there though? In view of the new technology that's in this building, should we be paying the custodians in this building the same differential as we are for other buildings? I mean, we're asking more of them, it seems to me. Do you have any thoughts on that yet? I know it's.
It's contractual.
Yeah, I think it's, I think that.
Well, it's contractual, but right now, we're paying the head custodian for the LHS building the same as we are for, say, center school, correct?
Yeah, I would have some thoughts on that anyway, John. I think the perspective of maintaining the technology. I, I mean, if you don't have enough people from a people, you know, hourly basis, that's one thing. But as far as the skill set required to maintain the facility, the equipment, it should not be that, that abnormal for people. Changing filters and that type of thing is not, you know, it's, to maintain a computer system, you're not actually doing anything with a computer. So you're actually making sure you have right air filters and air conditioners on and that type of thing. So if they maintain air conditioning systems, at least from a base, basis of not being an HVAC guy, but just making sure air filters and stuff are in place, then it's, it should be kind of the same on all schools.
Well, and I'll just, and I'm just gonna kind of try to shut this down a little bit because, you know, I think that we certainly value what they do here. And I'm very appreciative of what, everything they have to do to learn how to maintain this new facility. But, you know, this is, this is a conversation that's better to be brought up during a bargaining session and not in an open session.
Well, I'm just bringing it up now to alert people to the fact that perhaps we should have a discussion down the road on this.
Well, and, and I would, I would just respond by saying that if the high school custodians or if, if that unit feels that that's an important priority for them, then they can bring it up during their next round of negotiations in, in two years.
I have a question about me, too.
Sure.
We're talking about the inside of it. The outside looks like it's got a lot of beautiful plantings and they look like they're, I haven't walked around in the last few days, but like everything looks absolutely beautiful.
Yeah.
I'm hoping that the outside is gonna be maintained as well as the inside. And I don't know if that's us.
That's DPW.
So have, are they aware, we've all, we've all, we've all been working together, I'm sorry. Because I haven't been part of this process, I'm hoping.
The DPW director, Mike Rabel, sits on school building committee. So he's been aware of this from the beginning. I know that there's been some question over the level of funding that's committed to maintaining the grounds of the high school. But I think that they are prepared to, to take it over.
They are prepared. A lot of thought went into what types of plants to get and what would be lower maintenance than other varieties.
Just throwing it out there.
Yeah, no, it's a good question. Alright, so let's move on to reports. If there's nothing else for Jim or anybody else. Do we need an SBC report? I think they were here. They did a good job. So legislative?
The great general court is not in session. So there's nothing to report.
Green?
We are meeting on Wednesday morning, ten AM, just to discuss our green policy.
Great. Operations?
I guess, I just put out, I sent out today, so I didn't give anybody really a time to look at it. Proposed charter for the operations slip committee. And what I'd like to do is, we don't need to debate it here today, just for a second time, take a look at it. Send me some, if you have any comments, just send them to me directly. So we don't have to violate any open meeting rules. And, and we can bring it back with maybe a final draft for this committee to take a look at and finalize next time.
Can I give you some comments right now?
Yeah.
Okay.
I can type.
I haven't written down, so I'll give this to you too, if that's what you want. With regard to the ground maintenance standards or the, the MOU that we would be developing for field maintenance around here. We want to include the town manager and we also want to include Barry Jarvis from the Park and Rec Department, who has said basically that she's on board whenever we're ready to go. And in which case, she'll probably ask a member of the Parks Board to join at that point. We also wanna make sure that we involve our athletic director in this. And other than that, I don't have any comments on this. But Barry's aware and she's good. She actually, she emailed me last week to find out what was going on. So when I know something, you'll know something.
I just got a question. When you said the two thousand eleven draft documents available, where is that?
It's out there somewhere. I mean, I've got actually on my PC, I've got it on my PC, so I can send it there. But there is a document that was done back, back when, but never finalized.
Oh, okay.
And so, so it was a starting document one time. Katie, I don't know if you gave it to me, so, Katie was working previously on this. We started taking a look at it.
What it is, I mean, just so everybody knows, is it's a document that actually was adopted by Park and Rec and DPW, which basically is just a bunch of standards that the Park and Rec Department wanted as far as the length of grass on fields. And it's very high level as far as how the fields should be maintained for, like, you know, cutting and watering, not as much as, you know, not with too much specificity to, not very specific for us. So, and it was, that was something Robin Crosby had given me. So it's outdated at this point. So.
It's a starting point.
Yeah, it's a good starting point. And Barry has even said that she wants it, you know, she needs to revisit it. So this is a good, good place to go. So thank you. And we can revisit this. Seal. Uh, seal, place.
They haven't had their meet, their first meeting yet in the school year.
Uh, collaborative?
Uh, we haven't had a meeting since our last meeting, so there's nothing to report.
Okay. Uh, middle school working group?
Um, same kind of conversation as the operations. I sent out a, uh, proposed, uh, uh, charter for the team. Again, any feedback, uh, again, you can give it to me right now or we can just take it, I'll take it forward. Looking for specific names, I know when we were on this team before, it kind of wandered a lot of different places, so so I will read, just for the camera, I guess, the objective here of using data, assess and provide a recommendation for how to provide the town with middle schools which meet the needs of the students over the next ten plus years. Ten plus years obviously can be ten to thirty years, depends on, or fifty years, however you wanna look at that, but at least ten years. At least get some focus on it and, and, uh, putting the students' needs in the focal point here of providing that, what they need, uh, over those times. So, that should help narrow us down toward what to do.
Cool. Alright, um, policy sub?
We have, um, a meeting this week as well, Thursday, to go over a couple of different policies to review.
Cool. I mean, if you need anything. Um, other, I got no other, naming committee, I guess, has to get together at some point.
I'm wondering if we should do that before or after town meeting? But probably before, so that we have the different color leaves on hand.
Um, yeah, I mean, I, I don't, I don't think it matters either way, to be honest with you, I mean, I'm, I'm not sure that the, the amount of money going into it is as, that's as important as just the function of the, of the account. But, either, either way, whatever you wanna do. I don't have a, I don't have
Let's, let's have it before.
Okay. Uh, alright, anything else, any other reports? Great. Seeing none, we'll move right along into the approval of warrants.
Uh, Michael, the, um, parent that made the request to keep their child?
Oh, that is correct, I, I'm sorry, before we move on to warrants. Uh, Marie called me earlier today, so this is why it's not in your packets. Um, a parent, uh, called Marie asking for a policy exemption or a waiver of our policy. Sh- her daughter's been in district since she was in first grade and this year, she's a senior and they are moving to Wilbraham. Uh, because she spent, you know, almost twelve years in the district, she's asked the school committee to, uh, waive its policy uh, and allow the student to complete her, uh, her schooling in Long Meadow.
Hmm.
And do you have anything to add?
No, I, I recommend that we do so.
So, are we, did you want us to take a vote tonight or?
I think we'll put the child's mind at ease if we did.
I mean, we can certainly, we don't wanna disrupt her schooling at all, so, uh, if the committee feels comfortable Which policy is it? Yeah. I know which policy it is, but we have all these codes and numbers that go along with them.
Could I ask, do we have a precedent for this?
We do. Uh, if you recall in the past, we've had parents come to school committee and ask for policy waivers, uh, in these circumstances. We've been a lot more, uh, I guess staunch in, in our, in how we've done it, and a little bit more conservative than how we've done it when it's been people looking to get their kids into district if they just have, like, uh, you know, sale, sale on their houses or, or anything like that.
For younger grades, but it, we're particularly sensitive to someone who's in senior year.
Okay. There you go. This is gonna be on tuition or non-tuition basis?
Non-tuition.
Okay.
We can't charge tuition because they're gonna live in state?
Uh, that's right, makes sense to me. Alright, so this is on policy JFAB, um, to accept a student on a non-tuition basis. So, can I entertain a motion for the admission of a non-resident student on a non-tuition basis, uh, per policy file, JFAB?
I'll move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor? Motion carries. I would qualify this by saying, what?
For the remainder of senior
Oh, for the remainder of senior year. As amended?
As amended.
Are we naming her? I don't know who
We can.
Okay.
Zoe Siegel.
Okay. Um, alright, so as amended?
Yes.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, great. So. Welcome back. Yes, I don't know, um
I'm sure that, uh, she'll be very grateful, so thank you.
Yes. No, definitely, I mean, you know, obviously, these are the type, type of circumstances where we try to do what's in the best interest of the student.
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, glad we could help her out. Okay, approval of warrants.
I move that the school committee approve the warrant batch number twenty-two hundred of the general operating fund for fiscal year twenty-fourteen, dated thirteenth September twenty thirteen, in the amount of three hundred and thirty-two thousand, four hundred and fifteen dollars and seventy-three cents.
Second.
A motion and a second, all those in favor? Motion carries.
I move that the school committee approve the warrant batch number twenty-two zero one of the special revenues and grants fund, dated thirteenth September twenty thirteen, in the amount of thirty-five thousand, three hundred and twenty-two dollars and eight cents.
Second.
A motion and a second, all those in favor? Motion carries.
I move that the school committee approve the warrant batch number twenty-two zero two of the school lunch fund for fiscal year twenty-fourteen, dated thirteenth September twenty thirteen, in the amount of four thousand, one hundred and seventy-two dollars and ninety-one cents.
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second, all those in favor? Motion carries.
That's it.
For warrants, great. Alright, uh, next on the agenda is the consent agenda, do you have a motion on the consent agenda?
I move on the recommendation of the superintendent that the school committee approve the consent agenda for the September ninth, two thousand and thirteen school committee meeting as presented.
Second.
A motion and a second, and just so Janet and Kim are aware, we often sometimes get, we, we often get items that are under the consent agenda. In this case, it's a field trip request, uh, that we don't discuss and, and we voted as consent agenda. If you do wanna discuss it, we would have to vote, take it out of consent agenda, but we're basically voting to give our consent to the item, which is pretty standard. Um, any further discussion? Seeing none, call for a vote, all those in favor? Motion carries. Uh, alright, minutes. You have a motion on the minutes from July twenty-fourth?
I move that the school committee approve the minutes to the July twenty-fourth, two thousand and thirteen school committee meeting as presented.
Second.
Great, any corrections or further discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote, all those in favor? Motion carries. You have a motion on the minutes from August twelve?
I move that the school committee approve the minutes to the Au- August twelfth, two thousand and thirteen school committee meeting as presented.
Second.
A motion and a second, any further discussion, corrections? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote, all those in favor? And contrary to what the, uh, annotated agenda says, there is no executive session planned for this meeting. Uh, and so with that, I will call for a motion to adjourn.
So, I'll move.
Hmm, do we have an executive session? Regarding legal?
Regarding legal?
Yes.
We do?
We do?
Oh, then, next time's fine.
Okay. Um
So, second on the
Motion, second on the motion to adjourn.
Second.
Great, um, all those in favor? Motion carries. Thank you very much for joining us, we will be back on the twenty-third, uh, at seven o'clock, a great night. And now I suppose this is when we all talk and do like what they do on the news.